This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, The Star Ledger, and on the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. I adjutant to my left and right, Councilor Chambers. Chief, it's your big night. You lead us in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Forster?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Colonel Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Pasternak.
Here.
Councilmember Wargis.
Borough Attorney Renaud.
Here.
And Borough Administrator Huber.
Here.
Cool.
Honors and awards and presentation. Tonight, we have three promotions. Promotion of Lieutenant Culver and Sergeant Garrity and the swearing of new Officer Luis Rivera. Council Public Safety Chair, would you add some confidence in me on this? Square. Your family, family members. Hi, Louis Rivera. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly perform. And justly perform. All the duties. All the duties. Of the office of police officer. Highland Park Police Officer according to the best of my abilities. Of all of the Highland Park Police Officer according to the best of my. I do further solemnly swear. I do further solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the state of New Jersey. Of the state of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. And that I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And to the government established. And to the government established. In the United States. In the United States. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. And now I'm going to ask. Captain Garrity.
You forget he works nights.
I'm like. Your family members.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody can help all about you. For that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, Captain Garrity. I, Captain Garrity. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully. And impartially and justly. And impartially and justly. Perform the duties. Perform the duties. Of the office. Of the office. Of Highland Park Police Sergeant. Of Highland Park Police Sergeant. According to the best of my abilities. Best of my abilities. I do further solemnly swear. Do further solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the state of New Jersey. Of the state of New Jersey. And that I will bear true, true faith. That I will bear. True faith. True faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And the government established. And to the government established. In the United States. And in the United States. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. So help me God. Come on, Jake. We're going to take a quick break. Family member is missing, so we'll come back.
We're waiting for one, but in the meantime.
In the meantime, the chief is going to do a sound appeal.
Hiring is always big for us and promoting is even more important. Louis Kim saw us from Jersey City Police Department. He absolutely crushed it on the interviews. His background, his everything was just exemplary and we're excited to have him here as a new officer. The experience he's going to bring from Jersey City to Highland Park is going to be tremendous and I'm excited to get to know him as an officer. He's in field training now, he's on nights, if you see him, stop him, say hi. Get a chance to know him, you're gonna, you're gonna really like this person who's our new police officer. As to the promotions, I've worked with Lieutenant, now Lieutenant Culver my entire career and Sergeant Garrity for the last 20 years. Excited to promote both of them, they've deserved it for a long time and we finally had the ability to put them in the spots that they deserve and the places that we need them. They're going to help the department grow to the future, the leadership of this place and I couldn't be prouder of either of them. They've been my friends for a very long time. And to see them succeed and push themselves up is, has been awesome to watch, so I just want to thank them for holding the line and doing the job and always being there and doing it right, so thank you guys. We could wait a minute. We could wait a minute for your son.
You've put in years of service, we can wait a minute.
You waited, you waited 22 years.
We can give you a few minutes out of the time. Where's the Highland Park family, we come together.
So I'll throw it out there now, when this is, this brief ceremony is over, there's an opportunity for everybody to kind of get together at the community center, which is right out the back doors here. We have some refreshments, please go enjoy, mingle, talk to each other, introduce yourselves. Take, take the time to just kind of celebrate this moment. It's all there for everyone to have that time to do that, so please, please evaluate yourself at that. Oh yeah, okay, I could, alright, sure. Christmas is coming, Hanukkah is coming, Kwanzaa is coming, all these great holidays in the wintertime. The roads are getting sketchy, be safe. Be vigilant, pay attention to your neighborhoods, pay attention to your neighbors' houses, pay attention to what's going on, on the roads. Just be safe, this time of year is always dangerous, it's a hard time for a lot of people that don't have a lot. And they take it most themselves and take it hard, so just be careful, watch out for each other, be there for each other. No, we're not going to go down with packaging.
Trying to kill time.
We're going to keep this high and we're going to keep.
No porch fire.
No porch fires. Our Facebook post from Lieutenant Soen today covered all of the. All the torch fire on badness we need to cover.
He's a mile, he's a mile away, exactly a mile away.
I apologize, he came right from wrestle practice, so.
Let's, let's. You get to hear some of the work that we're doing, so give us some time, so we're going to go do some of our work and then we'll come back to this piece, okay? We got a big one. While we get back to work, I'm just going to ask everyone to be a little bit quiet. And tonight, we're going to have a. Okay, on December 16th, we are going to be having a recognition for John Marion and any of our two Highland Park Arts Commission members who are leaving us after many years of wonderful services. And I'm going to move on to council reports. And then I'm going to start with Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, I'm Phil George and I'm council liaison to the borough's public safety agencies and Highland Park Library. As we know and as we see it, we're in the middle of congratulations to the new superior officers, Lieutenant Jason Culver, Sergeant Sean Garrity, whom I've known for a long, long time, starting way back in the days as prosecutor and new police officer. I'm proud to see them moving up as they deserve, but they deserve our thanks for stepping up to these new positions and taking responsibility. Their experience and feeling for our town reflect values that show us in our best focus and them in their best focus. Particularly, I also like to thank our new patrolman Luis Rivera for joining us, who will be a great addition, good interview, tough interview, looking forward to seeing him on the force. Everyone, please, if you're listening at home, stop and say hello to our officers, talk to them for just a moment and you'll see where our department is headed in the great direction that we're going. On Wednesday, December 10th, the Police Department is partnering with the members of the Human Relations Commission, who will be providing the ingredients to decorate cookies to celebrate the rich tapestry of cultures in our community for the next Coffee and Cocoa with a Cop event. Also, the cookie decorating, the members of Highland Park PDA Local 64 will also be on hand for the final day of the Toys for Tots donation drive. So if you're coming, please also bring along a toy to help spread some holiday cheer where it might not otherwise reach. All these activities plus free refreshments will be on Wednesday, December 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Community Center just across the way. And you can contact Brian Fitzgerald at bfitzgerald@hp.com, Mark Reefer at reefer@hp.com, at borough.com, or Oscar Cleaver at ocleaver@hp.com. The Fire Department, they answered 46 fire calls in the month of November, which is showing how well the reorganization of the department by our administration is working to get services available 24/7 and 365 locally. The Fire Department partnered with the Police Department and Team Zone 6, Team Center for Distribution of Food over the Thanksgiving week to anybody who needed it. Chief Shami told me that our firefighters experienced a great feeling of working with the food giveaway at the team center. I have to report that the Fire Department insisted I report that they safely delivered Santa Claus to the boroughs and tree lighting on Saturday. No laughter there, please, as part of a Main Street Holiday Market, which was very successful. I think the largest crowd lately. Firefighters were in the middle of a large crowd of kids who had fun seeing Santa and also enjoying everything that was going on at the Holiday Market. They gave up fire hats and candy cakes and had a great time. At the library, if you turn down North 6th in the last few days, you'll see that the pergola is finally in place, which finishes off the Ida Pushner brand to the library. It's on the north side of the library along North 6th. With the spring will finish up the landscaping on the pergola and it will be a nice little resting place to come out and read, sit, enjoy, talk with people, and hopefully brighten up that side of the library. The One Book One Town Program's final count is nearly 200 participants for the various events. The event is actually still carrying on. The library has mounted an art exhibit which, in the community room, which reflects the mood, the content, the feeling of the novel in the media room. And they are also at work as we sit here right now, installing more artwork in the library area. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know, I should try to go with Lieutenant if everyone is here.
Oh, he's here, okay.
Yes, thank you very much, everyone.
Well, I yield the floor.
Alright, the man of the hour. It's important, we waited for you because we wanted to see, have you seen your dad getting promoted. Guys want to. Good afternoon. Hi, James Culver.
Hi, Jason Culver.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the, of the office of the Highland Park Police Lieutenant.
Of the office of Highland Park Police Lieutenant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
The state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people. So help me God. Thank you for.
No, 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 no. Now he just want to ditch. Congratulations on Highland parties. And now we're going to take a five-minute recess until I know you. Okay, and now we go to Councilmember Jason Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I don't want to stick around for my report. Well, thank you, my name is Jason Poston, I'm the Chair of the Health and Public Services Committee. I just have two things I wanted to report on tonight. First, I wanted to highlight the Food Handling Establishment Ordinance, that is on tonight's agenda. The work of this began earlier this year when our Board of Health identified some gaps in our municipal code in the area of food handling safety. Did a lot of research into this, found that even though our departments in this area come from state regulation, we didn't really have anything spelled out in our own code on this subject. And in particular, we lack the requirement that everyone who prepares food in our restaurants, cafes, and other retail food establishments, take any basic food handling safety training to help ensure food safety. So this ordinance would love those gaps, make the food safety rules clear at the local level, and require that everyone involved in food preparation in Highland Park Retail Food Establishment has the knowledge base to do so in a clean and safe manner. So like I mentioned, we've worked on this for quite some time and I want to give a few shout outs and thanks to a number of people who helped get us to tonight. First, there's Jay Crosson from the Board of Health, who first took it upon himself to think he had to use our existing code and identify our needs for this ordinance. And just wanted to thank the rest of the Board of Health for their added support. Assistant Business Administrator Jake Callahan and Borough Administrator Terry Hoare for their research coordination and helping this together. And lastly, but not least, Borough Council Aaron Renaud for tracking the ordinance and answering my slew of questions. Thanks everyone for making this happen and I encourage all my colleagues to support this ordinance tonight. Second, I just wanted to recognize that tomorrow is International Day of Persons with Disabilities. This date was established in 1992 by the UN to increase understanding and awareness of disability issues and the abilities of people with disabilities. Promote the full and effective participation in society for the dignity, rights, and well-being of people with disabilities. And celebrate the achievements and contributions of people with disabilities. Over 1 million people, or approximately 15% of the world's population, live with some form of disability and face barriers to inclusion in many key aspects of society. This year's theme is fostering disability-inclusive societies for advancing social progress. And that's a goal I think we all get behind. And I'll just close with a special congratulations again to all of our officers who are sworn in today for promotions or to destroy our ranks, we appreciate your service and there that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. And I go to Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm Matt Hale, I chair the Economic Development Committee. Couple things coming up that are exciting. December 13th from 4 to 8 is an ideal market. Last couple have been fantastic, including, as so said, the tree lighting and that market, but there's another one on December 13th from 4 to 8, where there'll be gifts, arts and crafts, music, all kinds of fun stuff. Then on December 14th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. is the annual Town Monor Light. I made a joke about Sukkhan Yod last time, so I won't make it again, but come and eat and have a great time with the Monor Lighting. And then on December 15th, from 6:30 to 8:30, right here in this room, not the community center, right here in this room, we're going to be holding a community meeting about the Third Avenue Public Plaza. This is a great opportunity to come and see the latest designs from our professionals, from arterial, ask some questions, it should be a great event, so please come out again, that's December 15th from 6:30 to 8:30, right here in this room. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Quick question, is there going to be a Kwanzaa event?
I do not know of a Kwanzaa event at this time, but I can certainly check it out.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor. Kinetics usually has the Kwanzaa, I'm not sure.
That would be right here, in this room.
Got it.
Not next door.
Thank you, that's very, it's very exciting, I will be there, and it's very exciting. My name, good evening, everyone, my name is Matthew Hirsch, I'm the Chair of the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee. Wanted to congratulate Lieutenant Culver and Sergeant Garrity and Officer Rivera for joining the ranks. I mean, we've all known Culver and Garrity for a long time and their service to the borough is unmatched, so we're really excited to see them elevate and take their leadership positions. Just a few items, Mayor, the Environmental Commission meets tomorrow, Wednesday, December 3rd at 8:00 p.m. on Zoom. You can find the link at www.hpboro.com. Even though we do have a work session next week, I'll announce that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee meets on Wednesday, December 10th at 7:30 p.m., also on Zoom. On the, the, the link at www.hpboro.com. As the Liaisons to Sustainable Highland Park, we work closely with the community as a link between the community and the borough to be better environmental stewards. And our, our achievements are, are, are tracked through sustainability certification by Sustainable New Jersey. We have been recertified as silver, once again, we're going for gold the next roundup, but a lot of the things that happened in between are what get us to that status, so just a few things that are happening, led by Sustainable Highland Park in the next four weeks. On December 6th, there is a Sustainable Highland Park Community Cleanup. Meet at the Walkavitz Pavilion on December 6th, between, at 10:00, and that cleanup will take place between 10:00 and noon. Supplies will be provided for you, bags, gloves, items to pick up, debris will be provided, but you are free to bring your own. On December 17th, please join, everyone's welcome to our December, to our December monthly meeting on December 17th, but then that is immediately followed by a holiday party. So join us in person at the Teen Center right over here at 600 Better, between 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. We'll recap all of the, all of these accomplishments and share some appetizers and desserts at our Zero Waste Party. All are welcome and are encouraged to bring something to share. What is zero waste, well that means we try to have this party without throwing that much away out. So we bring reusable plates, reusable utensils, and we try to leave the least, the lightest footprint possible. Just a couple of items, just as Public Works Liaison, just, you know, with today's weather and with winter creeping up on us quickly, we're going to start seeing some hazardous conditions on the roadways. The chief of this as well, but when snow is in the forecast, the Public Works Department has some suggestions to assist in our snow removal efforts. And, you know, these are designed to make the streets safe as possible for residents following a snowstorm. You can go to www.hpboro.com to get familiar with the guidelines that are, that are required, particularly if you live on snow emergency routes. There are, there are times where you will have to remove your car if there are, if we go above a certain amount of measurable snow. So please be mindful of that and help a neighbor out. You can always help a neighbor out with shoveling their walk, particularly neighbors who might live on a corner property who may not have the resources, the availability, or, 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 or simply are not able to clear their walkway. Please help them out and Councilman Pasternak, I, I don't know, would you mind if I mentioned something at Community Services with snow removal, it's kind of related to snow removal. It depends, no, of course you can.
I love it.
Thank you, this is the work of Councilman Pasternak, but it was related, so there is also a volunteer effort in town to remove snow, so the Department of Community Services keeps a list of volunteers, both paid and free, for folks who are in need of snow removal. So if you do need a snow removal and you're interested in contacting a neighbor who has given their name to Community Services, please contact Jennifer Molina at jmolina@hpboro.com. Thank you, Casey. Since, and well, I'm trying, I'm trying to stay in my lane here, but since Councilwoman Vargas is not here, I did just want to mention that this Sunday, December 7th, from 4 to 9, at Pinos is the Highland Parks Arts Commission's Poetry Festival. And the reason why, you know, that is very important, but I'm also one of the judges, so I'll be there. And so please come, and Mayor, that is my report, thank you.
Do you want to report on the Warming Center?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, we have, yeah, sure. So we do have a, we have a warm, we do keep a Code Blue Center during, during, during cold, during cold nights in Highland Park. This is a, this is a volunteer service that, that Highland Park provides, we're not required by the state. But, but, but the point is, we do have an unsheltered population here and we do have folks who also may not have a warm place to be when temperatures get extremely cold. So if you do need assistance, please reach out and call the police. It's a, I should know off the top of my head, 732.
572.
572.
3800.
3800, thank you. Thank you, that, that non-emergency line actually is burning in my head, so I apologize. But thank you, Mayor, for, for, for.
Council President Kent Johne.
I actually don't have much, you were just here last week. I don't have much, but I did receive a few emails and I thought I would clarify from my report last week when I touched on the state's budget and some people asked me, where is this surplus or where did you see that in the budget? And I didn't touch on it, it's actually from the sales from the EV cars, because that started this year. So prior to that, you can buy an electric vehicle tax-free, so this year they start collecting and everyone that's still dedicated to their electric vehicles are now getting hit with the sale tax and it's crazy, but including myself, so that's where that surplus is coming. And also, since Councilmember Normal Vargas isn't here too, I also wanted to mention that there's a, I guess, fairly new program at BRAC that is for toddlers, starting as young as two years old, it's called Jumping Jelly Beans. there is a, I guess, fairly new program at BRAC that is for toddlers, starting as young as two years old, it's called Jumping Jelly Beans. I signed my son up and love, I think they still have openings and love for others to join. It's from ages to five, and that's very important.
Thank you. We'll return every now.
Thank you, Mayor. Normally, my, my only report is to just inform the public as to what the speaking portion of the event, of the meeting will be, so we'll go ahead and do that. There are several opportunities for the public to speak, whether you are on Zoom or here in council chambers. The first is number nine on the agenda, it's public participation, that gives the public three minutes to speak on any item that's on the agenda, that your ordinance is on first reading, as well as resolutions. There'll be a second public participation at the conclusion of the agenda, that is to speak for three minutes on any topic that any member of the public wishes to bring forward. We do not have any ordinances on second reading tonight, so that won't be an issue, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Borough Administrator Report.
Good evening, yes, I have a couple of quick items. First, on the agenda tonight, we do have another ordinance on introduction, it's a bond ordinance authorizing, appropriating, excuse me, eight hundred thousand dollars toward DPW heavy equipment, in particular, a garbage truck, which is very, very much needed. You may see some strange configurations during garbage pickup when our rear loader is out of whack, and it is right now. And we are going to order a new one, fortunately, we have a $250,000 grant to offset some of that cost. And then the remaining amount of money would go towards other needed heavy equipment at DPW, so I thank council's consideration for that item. The other matter I'd want to report on, I mentioned a while back that we were notified that Middlesex Water Company, where we purchase our water, has requested a rate increase of the Board of Public Utilities. So we have filed a formal, I guess we're an intervener in the rate case, along with several other municipalities that are in the same position. It's a very technical process, as I'm learning, but with the help of our special counsel on that matter, we are participating as best we can, and our goal is to understand the basis for the rate that's proposed and to advocate for some places where maybe there could be some cutbacks to kind of reduce the cost to the borough and to our customers. So I'll keep you posted as that goes through, I understand it's gonna take several months from this point, so it's not a fast-moving train, but I've been, I started participating in those meetings about a week ago, I just thought I'd report out on that. And that is all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a very tiny report as well, it's an update from last week. Last week, I reported that the Upper Raritan, that the, the road diet was supposed to start on the Upper Raritan in November. It didn't happen. This week, we received an email saying that they're gonna be starting that road diet next week, so fingers crossed that there is no incoming weather or anything that would preclude them from coming in and to start that much-needed work on Upper Raritan. As I promised, I will keep you all posted as to where we are. That's my report, thank you. And now it's time for public participation, twenty-one minutes total, three minutes per speaker, including items on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attending person will be heard first, followed by those who are on Zoom. And we have no one in public participation right now, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have two attendees on Zoom, but no hands raised.
Okay, see if not, may I have a motion to close public participation?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Thor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Postonik.
Yes.
Ordinance number, ordinance required first reading, please report on the introduction of ordinance number 25-2119.
Bond ordinance providing for the purchase of various vehicles for the Department of Public Works, buying in the Borough Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating eight hundred thousand, therefore, inclusive of the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Grant, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing the issuance of five hundred and fifty thousand in bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof. Has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title and supplemental debt statement prepared by the Finance Officer was filed in the clerk's office on December 2nd, 2025.
May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 25-2119 on introduction?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
This is a much-needed garbage truck that is long overdue for the borough, and as Terry mentioned, will also help finance other heavy equipment. Many thanks to Michael Zorkowitz and Terry for sourcing this, this purchase into the Public Works Committee, President Thor from the Council, Hale, for, for, for moving forward with this, so. To the Finance Committee, so this is a big deal, and we're really excited about this, so absolutely nice.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Postonik.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-2120, please report an introduction of ordinance number 25-2120.
And we're not submitting and supplementing the code of the Borough Highland Park to add chapter 103 titled House Regulations and Licenses. Article one, Food Handling Establishments, has been duly introduced by the Health and Human Services Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by justice.
May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 25-2120 of introduction to authorize publication as required by law instead of public hearing on December 16th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
I'd like to thank you, and Councilmember Postonik, for the work they put on this, very detailed, really important work, yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Postonik.
Yes, and thank you, George, for the time words, and thanks, oh, a very active little shout-out to Health and Human Services Committee for approving this, thank you, guys.
Okay, now I move on to the consent agenda, may I ask if there's any councilmember that would like to separate anything on the consent agenda? Separate votes?
No, babe.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the following consent agenda, 11A through 11G?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Postonik.
Yes.
And now we move to appointments, appointments to Universal Access Leila Ross, may I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Congratulations, Leila, yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Postonik.
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for the second public participation, three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to included 9:00 p.m. Comments from members of the public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom, Terry, who's listening?
We're up to four.
Attendees, but no hands up. See if not, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Postonik.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, may I have, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting is scheduled for December 16th, 6:00, 7:00 p.m., see you there. You say?